Okay, once again, good evening. So as usual, we start off with violations pursuant to property maintenance law, section two forty-nine C, but there are none this evening, so we'll move right out to public comment on agenda items. So let's start with the first row. Anybody in the first row have any public comments on any agenda items? Mr. Smith, Mr. Kraus? No? Second row? Anyone? Third row? Back row? In the very back. Oh, Matt Higgins. Didn't see you sneak in there. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't think it's actually on.
You gotta hold the button and turn it on. It's probably not on.
Let's make sure it's on before you start, Matt, or else they won't hear you on the recording.
Jeffrey, can you check that?
No.
Hang on. Jeffrey's coming.
So, this is really loud. You're voting on this building moratorium law tonight? There's nothing in this law to stop in Woodbury Junction or anyone with a completed secret and a negative declaration along with a conclusion to a public hearing, as far as what I can see from how it's written. In that being the case, it should be approved by the planning board, or else it's feckless. If you're gonna go ahead and let people have an option to go ahead and build, they should have a planning board approval, not some okay to a negative declaration and go through a hearing, because it's not approved. So Woodbury Junction will be allowed to build. They're the biggest thing going on here, isn't it? Well, anyway, if you're gonna do this, you should do it right. I spoke to somebody on a planning board in Point Pleasant, and this was recently, and he said it costs $2,500 or $5,000 for every single law down there that they produce, because you have to go through all of the hoopla of the consultants in all of that business. And so far, I think you're up to 12. I wish you'd back off and quit doing this. Because if you do, at least do it right, and it should have a planning board approval, or you shouldn't even be doing this. I mean, you're gonna allow this to happen. The biggest draw on the water, this is about helping us with our water situation, well, the biggest draw on the water isn't all of these buildings. So you should bear that in mind. If you're writing it, write it right. Make sure it's good. And again, I'm not in favor of all these laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public have anything to say on any agenda items before we move on? Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to administrative business. Acceptance of minutes. Can I please have a motion to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held July 8th, 2021?
Make the motion.
Thank you, Trusty Graziano and Trusty Gomez. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye. Approval of abstract, looking for a motion to approve abstract number four containing vouchers two one zero two three two through two one zero three two one totaling $768,050 and 23 cents.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tara. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, fire department equipment requisition, looking for a motion to approve fire department equipment request 2021-17 totaling approximately $3,432 for the purchase of a natural gas detector, three thermal cameras, one for each of the chief vehicles, gas detector for car three, and two CO detectors for car six and car seven.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Chris and Jesus, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up, Mike Pennella will be joining us from the village of Portchester, where he's been working as a senior code enforcement officer since 2013. Can I please have a motion to appoint Michael Pennella to the position of full-time building inspector three with a start date of August 2nd, 2021, and an annual salary of $85,000?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Mike, and welcome aboard. Just going back to a previous item that I skipped over, I apologize, looking for a motion to change the status of Litten, Thomas, and Ivan Pierre from active to inactive within the fire department.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now vote aye. Budget modification. So at the end of every fiscal year, we need to do our year-end closeout and do budget modifications. So I need a motion to approve the modifications to the fiscal year 2020 slash 2021 budget as submitted by Clerk Potvin.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tara. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye. So that's it for new business. Moving on to old business, we need to make a decision on introductory local law 10 of 2020 building moratorium. So three written comments were received by the July 16th deadline. One from Jerry Frond, who suggested the law exempt those looking to build single housing where a septic will be implanted, reading it verbatim, and will not require public water. The second from Dorothy Morris stating, "The past 50 years has absorbed building development, which has in many ways destroyed what is Woodbury. In her opinion, the area is now saturated, and to continue building will be most devastating. And she believes the law should be approved to preserve what we have with no exceptions." And three, Stephanie DeJesus states she supports the moratorium as the village needs to assess its resources and infrastructure, adding, "The current infrastructure is at capacity and cannot be taxed with more use." So before seeking motions, I'd like to offer the board the opportunity to make any comments or have a discussion. Chris, anything?
No, I'm good. I think this is something very important.
I'm good. I'm good.
All right. I do have a couple of comments. I do find myself somewhat in agreement with Matt Higgins in that, you know, first of all, and I didn't prepare comments with regard to this, and I've been thinking about this a lot over the past couple of weeks, and I just wanted to express myself before we have a vote on this. A lot of the reasons that we're doing this, well, we're doing this primarily because of water issues. We're already undertaking a water study, or actually, we already did a water study. We hired a hydrogeologist who's examining our infrastructure, potential future water sources, and the aquifer to see how it would be impacted by not only what we're doing, but what our neighbors all around us are doing, and that's obviously very important. We're already in the process of digging a well right now, which will be done and in service by the end of the year. We just finished rehabbing another well, and I was gonna talk about that later, but we finished that, and that'll be up to speed and back in service next week. And mostly, and this is really the point that stuck in my head the most, we're attempting to legislate a process that is already, for the most part, handled at the planning board level. In my opinion, the planning board already has the ability to either allow a resolution to be passed or not be passed based on water and sewer availability. And in fact, we just approved forms to go out to applicants that they would have to prove that they have the resources prior to getting approval at the planning board level. So we're gonna be legislating a process that we already handle at the planning board level. So I'm just not sure that redundancy is needed. But mostly, we're already solving those problems. We have the money in the bank, not only to finish the well that we're working on now, but to just about complete a second well, and once the hydrogeologist tells us where to put that well, we'll be able to do that. So I'm just not sure that a six-month moratorium, which almost certainly will lead to a 12-month moratorium, just based on past practice, and maybe not, is necessary, because we already have the mechanisms in place with which to deal with those things. And, you know, I don't see any projects that are currently on the near horizon that would be impacted by something like this. There are long-term projects like hotels and things of that nature that would be impacted by things like this, and there are property owners in town that are trying to sell their properties and trying to close on these deals that may or may not be impacted by us doing this as well. So just thinking about all of the different aspects of this. And then lastly, of course, we always have to talk about money. In our line item in the budget that we just started last month, we have $300,000 in building permits budgeted, and if we put a moratorium in place for at least six months, we would be impacting our revenue to the point where we'd have to seriously consider modifications to the budget to be able to handle that at a time where we just appointed a third building inspector, where we didn't intend to have a third building inspector until the first of the year. So we have a lot of expenses that we didn't anticipate, we're gonna have a loss in revenue for sure, I don't know what that's gonna be. And I just wanted to bring all of these points up to the rest of the board before we vote on it, because I think they're all important points. And that's what I have. Any thoughts on that, or any additional comments? I mean, I'm open to discussion on any of those points. I'd really like to...
No. You make valid points.
I appreciate that.
Very valid points. I don't really see this, I think we're taking it, I wanna look at this as more of a pause for us to sort of figure out all water plan in place. We also have an issue with volunteerism, which I'll speak more about during the board comments, but I foresee myself, maybe this not going more than six months. I don't really anticipate this having to go 12 months, because I think we do have a plan in place, and we are moving forward with it. We just need some kind of pause. In terms of economic revenue, yes, we are gonna take a hit with that, but I also think that we looked at this budget, and I think we underestimated some of the revenue that would come in through the sales tax now that things are opening back up again. I think that'll be a big help. Yes, we will lose some of the building permits and whatnot in the meantime, but those will be back. They're not going anywhere. They want to build here in Woodbury, they will. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Andrew. Anybody else have any thoughts? Okay. Then with that said, I'm looking for a motion to adopt local law nine of 2021, which was formerly introductory local law 10 of 2020, just for clarification purposes, instituting a moratorium on certain permits, certificates of occupancy, and approvals.
I'll make the motion.
Trusty Graziano with the motion? Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Excuse me.
I'll let you. Go on for a sneeze.
No, it was a...
Or in between.
Little bit of a cough. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know. I'm still thinking. Yeah, I know. I'm sorry, I'm gonna vote now.
There you go.
So we need a roll call, please. Desiree? Oh, of course.
Trusty Graziano?
Aye.
Trusty Gomez?
Aye.
Trusty Burke?
Aye.
Trusty Jacomaza?
Aye.
Mayor Egan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, discussion of New York State DOT Turner Road redesign. So the New York State DOT contacted the village clerk to set up a virtual meeting with the board to discuss this issue further. As you know, we've had a discussion about this, we voted on it, we had presentations by engineers. So since that would have been a violation of the open meetings law, we invited them to attend the meeting this evening. We actually did have it on the agenda, as you know. So Clerk Potvin contacted them yesterday to confirm their attendance, and they stated they would not be attending. They asked her why the board denied the request, and she forwarded to them a copy of the minutes from the three meetings that the issue was discussed at. So that's it, so we're not gonna have any further discussion on that. So other new business, or new business renewal of dental policy, December 2021 through November of 2022. Looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the 2021-2022 dental policy renewal.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Andrew. Sorry, was that Chris?
No, it was Jesus.
Okay. That's why I asked. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up, petition for annexation. So just over a day ago, on the afternoon of July 20th, a petition for annexation was filed with the village clerk by Zigman Brock, the petitioner, for two Seven Springs Estate LLC, section block and lock, lot 213-1-64.2, consisting of approximately 12.83 acres. The petition is to have this property annexed from the town and village of Woodbury into the town of Palm Tree and village of Kirisjol. The petition states the number of inhabitants in the area to be annexed is zero. So we have a limited amount of time under the law to hold the public hearing, and even less time to schedule it. The permitted timeframe to schedule the hearing would expire prior to our next meeting, as well as prior to the town's next meeting. So I reached out to Supervisor Palermo to coordinate at least the village and town's date and time for a public hearing. This would still need to be coordinated with the village of Kirisjol and the town of Palm Tree. I reached out to them this afternoon, but if not, I did receive a response earlier just stating that they wanted the attorneys to work out a date and time. And that was just before this meeting. So if they agree with our proposed date and time, this would alleviate us from having to hold a special meeting prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting in three weeks from today. So I'm gonna be seeking a motion to hold a joint public hearing here at Village Hall on August 31st at 7:30 PM, as well as seek remotions, but before I do that, I wanted to give the board the opportunity to ask questions of either myself or counsel.
You said 31st, right?
I did.
Okay.
The meeting would be August 31st, the special board.
I didn't know if you said 20th.
That's assuming that both KJ and Palm Tree would agree to that. The town of Woodbury so far agreed to that, although they still have, excuse me, I'm sorry, although they still have to have a meeting to vote on that as well. That's a Tuesday.
31st?
Yeah.
Of August.
August, gotcha. Okay, good.
So like other large joint meetings that we've had to have, we've done them here simply because of the space.
Okay.
So I guess the first question, you know, is August 31st, good for you guys?
We'll make it work.
At least three of you, or two of you.
I'll make it work.
Okay. That's one.
I should be fine.
That's three so far, including me.
I'm good.
Jesus is good, and Tara's checking?
Yeah, I'm checking. Give me a minute.
I should check with the boss.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mrs. But...
Tara's good also. All right, so we're good. Hopefully, the town of Woodbury will vote as well the same way, but we obviously still have to coordinate with KJ and Palm Tree. So I'm looking for a motion for the following. Well, first of all, I'm looking for a motion to schedule a joint public hearing with the town of Woodbury, village of Kirisjol, and the town of Palm Tree on August 31st, 2021, at 7:30 PM here in Village Hall.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Chris, and Tara seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye. So I'm also looking for a motion for the following, that the Village Woodbury Board of Trustees has made the following findings. First, the proposed action is subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. The action may involve one or more other agencies. The action is preliminarily classified as an unlisted action, and that coordinated review of the action is appropriate. And lastly, that the Village Woodbury Board of Trustees shall be designated as lead agency if no objection to such lead agency status is received by the Board of Trustees from any other involved agency within 30 calendar days of making this notice to such agencies.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Chris.
I'll second.
Jesus with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye. Kelly, any further action under Seeker, or anything else that we need to take with regard to this?
No, that was it.
Thank you, ma'am. So that actually concludes regular business, so we'll move out to the public for public comment. Mr. Smith, anything? Neil? Anybody in the second row? Anybody in the third row? Oh. What's that, Brandon?
Good evening. I just had a quick question.
Excuse me, just for the record.
Brandon from Highland Mills, Brandon Calori from Highland Mills.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was a meeting on 6/24, it was the last virtual one you guys did. It was a little confusing, I was wondering if you could just shed a little light on something, questions I might have about the dispensary. I know there was back and forth voting, and then I don't know whether you guys chose on to opt-in, or opt-out, or what happened with that. I just, and what, because you had tabled it, just let me finish, you had tabled it to the meeting on the 8th, and it was not on the agenda, so I was just curious, I watched the video earlier, you said you bring it up in the next meeting, anyway. But I was just curious, what happened with that? Are we moving forward with the dispensary, or are we opting out, or are we gonna opt-in?
Okay, so we did vote on it that night, I'm not sure what we...
I think the confusion came in because we were talking about accepting public comment.
Okay, on something else, yeah.
Yes, and then that's what happened, yeah.
So the motion was to opt-out of allowing dispensaries in the village. The motion was defeated three to two, which means that anybody who wants to do that, and it's a legal permissible use in the state, is not allowed in the village of Woodbury.
Okay, that's all I was asking.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I said not not allowed.
You're double negative.
Which, yeah, somebody should slap me for that one.
Double negative.
Anyone else in the third row?
Four English.
Anyone in the fourth row? In the back?
No.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, I meant the back row. Maria, Mr. Hunter, or, okay, Joe. Okay, Matt, please, come on up.
So, with this whole annexation process you're talking about tonight, this is all brand-new to everybody, I think you should get it out to the public now, and make sure you get people to comment on it before that hearing. You should be putting it out, what's available should be put out online so that people know what's going on.
Just keep in mind, Matt, we got this a day and a half ago.
Right, but I'm telling you, you need to move, you need to get people involved and comment.
Well, hang on a second. Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, the joint public hearing is for the four boards to come together and vote on it, not to accept public comment?
They just do accept the public comment.
Oh, it is to accept public comment, okay.
But primarily, it's more for the applicant, for the petition, to make their case before the four boards as to why it should occur or should not occur.
Right.
But there is a public comment period during that hearing. So the public gets to comment on the petition during that hearing for all four boards to hear.
So the public, so the public is not, what they have out there, is it available or not?
What do you mean, what they have?
Is what they're petitioning for available, so for the public to see?
I don't know if it's been posted on the website yet, but it...
It will be.
Do you have a copy of it?
Do I have a copy of it?
Yes. Well, okay, there we go. So the public should have that document so that people can comment on it. That makes sense, right?
Yeah, but Matt, I mean, keep in mind, we've not held a public hearing on this yet. As I said, we got this on Tuesday afternoon.
No, I appreciate you putting it forward.
Well, I mean, we're, there's a very strict timeline that's dictated by, in state law.
Yeah, but everybody's gonna be on vacation August 31st. I'm not gonna be here, a lot of people aren't gonna be here, I'm just saying, get it out there so people can comment. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
And the other thing is, on this gathering place law, I know that this is gonna pop up sometime, because you haven't voted on it yet, and as I said before, I'm not for all of these new laws and all the money being spent on them, but especially in this case, I have to say, you know, you're asking for 14 people, gatherings of 14 people or more to have to get planning board approval, and that, to me, strikes of an unconstitutional edict from above. My family came from 14 people. So if we had one person over, we could get in trouble, because we met, and had one, we had 15 over. So plus, you can't enforce it. It's stupid. That gathering law is stupid, and whoever came up with it, they should, they should tell me who they are, because I'd like to know. They should be proud of themselves. But I oppose it, and you should too. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
And you ought to make it so that if you're gonna pass a law, the person that comes up with it should be proud of it. They should come out and say that they designed this thing. That's what you should do.
We work as a team, but, thank you.
Yeah, but still, somebody had the idea for that.
I understand. Thanks, Matt. Mrs. Hunter indicated she'd like something to say, or to say something?
Maria Hunter, as the mayor said, stated, 9/11 is on a Saturday this year. It's the 20th anniversary. Being on the beautification committee, as along with Desiree, we were very instrumental in getting the monument out there. I want to do something for the 20th anniversary. I want it to be fixed up, prepared, on the beautifications, end of it. Do I need your permission? Do I need the fireman's permission? Who's permission? Who am I going to go to? Just a thought, don't have to answer me tonight, but I want to do something that's a little bit more special this year, because it is a 20th anniversary. Whenever we have the fire department here, and we do the memorial, it's very important to me that we do this and we continue this in the most professional and way that we can. That monument was put for Michael Montesi, who was a Central Valley fireman, who died in that horrible tragic day, and we also honor Mike Hanson for that, because of what he's done with us to help us get that monument. So whatever feedback I can get from the board, the fire department, or whomever, I want the beautification to take this on, to fix it up, whatever we have to do. We always put the two baskets, or one basket out there with the flowers, I get the candle put together. If we want to fix it up, maintain it, do something differently, I need someone to let me know, so I can let my board know, I can get things in place, because it's two months away, and that's it.
Thanks, Maria, I appreciate your sentiment on that, and I'll definitely get with the fire chiefs and counsel if necessary, and we'll figure out exactly what we can do.
Hundred percent, absolutely, hundred percent.
Anyone else in the back row? Joe? Anybody else at all in the public? Okay, we'll move on to board member comment. So earlier today, I, along with our engineer and hydrogeologist, met virtually with representatives of the DEC regarding the Spayside Quarry application. Matt, listening? Matt? Spayside?
Spayside.
Okay, I'm just making sure. I know it's important to you. Sorry. We expressed our concerns that by deepening their quarry by 100 feet and pumping out the water at the bottom of the quarry, this could impact the aquifers that feed surrounding wells. During the discussion, the DEC clarified their position on preliminary testing requested by the village to determine impacts as a result of the proposed operations, and discussed provisions of the complaint, response, mitigation, and monitoring plan that they've required Spayside to develop. In addition to monitoring an off-site well owned by the village, the plan includes monitoring six existing bedrock wells and one proposed well located on Spayside's property. Our ask was to provide proactive monitoring, not just of their wells, but of sample neighboring wells within a half-mile radius. They are considering this request, they didn't say no, and this may be included in their decision on the application. If solicited, we encourage residents in the proximity of Spayside Quarry to participate in the monitoring plan. The DEC also agreed to consider the village's request to be copied on the quarterly monitoring reports that'll be provided by the applicant. reports that'll be provided by the applicant. We'll know more information at the DEC's decision within the next couple of weeks, so I will let everybody know what happens as quickly as it does happen. So, regarding our current water supply, I spoke with the water administrator this morning. The rehab of well number five is complete. So far, test pumping has produced fifty gallons a minute from the twenty gallons a minute prior to the rehabs. That's two and a half times. The water's currently being tested, and we should have that well back in production by Monday, and as long as the well continues to produce the water tested at, we should be able to lift our water restrictions by next week. So, that's good news.
That is good news.
So, that's what I have. Let's move down to the end. Trustee Graziano?
I'm very short and sweet tonight. Maria, very good idea. I agree with you a hundred percent. I think we should do something special for the twentieth anniversary. I spoke to Chief Brazil. I think Tara, you were with me that day when we, we had that conversation with him a couple of months ago. We suggested that as well. So, I'm on, we're on the same page with you on that, absolutely, a hundred percent. I just want everybody to stay healthy out there, regardless of what your thought process is. Case numbers are going up again, so I want everybody to kind of be careful out there and, you know, think about getting vaccinated, and that, that's really important. Our, you know, it's one of those things that can really help prevent somebody from getting seriously ill. So, just give it a thought, keep healthy out there, do what you can do, and I hope everybody has a great night.
Thanks, Chris. Jesus?
Thank you all for coming out. Thanks to all our departments that do a fine job, especially in the summer here when they're working outside. Be careful, please, and just remember to stay safe, healthy, and be kind as best as you can to others, so that way I can come back to you two falls over. Blessing, good night.
Thanks, Jesus. Tara?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Welcome, Mike, to the village. Very brief comments. Sitting on this board for the last nineteen months has really changed my perspective about a lot of things, what's important to me, what was important before, and what is important to me today while before you as a trustee. I realize that the differences I may have had in the past with those who may have been affiliated with a different political party or affiliated with different groups here in Woodbury really are the least of the issues we're facing here in our community today, as evidenced by several of the agenda items we discussed tonight. None of the differences we've had with one another, in my opinion, are, are bigger than what we're facing together, whether it's, you know, we're looking at unprecedented water shortages, we're looking at natural resources beyond water stretched so thin that we're on the verge, in my opinion, of a crisis. Much-needed water infrastructure upgrades that haven't been done and need to be done, a critical shortage of our first responder volunteers, most recently, a petition for annexation that was just filed. I have to look at these items and say to myself, what's important? Is it my personal differences with any one of you in this room? No. That's not why I wanted to serve, and that's not what I think my job is here today. So, I think when you're looking at the issues, as large as they are, in the mag, in this magnitude, we need to hone in on those and make those our priorities.